Good evening, everyone. Today is November 6, 2025, and this is the meeting of the Milford School Committee. So we will start with invitation to speak. There is no one here for that, which moves us on to announcements, correspondence, and distribution. Does anybody have anything for that?
This afternoon, our administrative team welcomed the panel of guests to talk about some of the ongoing immigration issues that our community is facing. We had Diego Lowe from the, he's the director of the Metro West Work Center, Elizabeth Matos, who's the chief in the Civil Rights Division and senior advisor to the Attorney General. We had State Rep. Brian Murray and State Senator Becca Rausch. They were here talking with our leadership team and helping us just kind of go through some of our own protocols and processes and helping us understand how we can help families get into our schools safely or at least feel like, feel safer coming to our schools. So just trying to understand the laws and making sure we have the right policies in place. So we spent an hour and a half with them. They graciously gave us an hour and a half of their time to kind of talk this through. And I think they gave us a lot of information that we hadn't had before. So it was a good time, and we thank them for spending time with us this afternoon.
Anything else? All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on. Actually, we'll skip the chairperson update because Agenda Item 4 is basically the same thing. So today, we do need to discuss and appoint a member of the school committee to the MSBA's designer selection panel. So just a brief update on what this is. This is the next step of the MSBA process, and there's a 16-member panel that's responsible for selecting the designer for the new high school project. Thirteen of those 16 members, if I have the numbers right, are MSBA-appointed officials. And then the town gets three seats. One of those three is an appointment by this board. Couple of highlights of this, the purpose of this position is to essentially review and select the designer from the pool of applicants that will come into the MSBA for this project. My understanding is that timeframe is that it'll start somewhere in January and be over by February. These meetings are morning meetings, as I was told, sometimes between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., something like that. They are remote. And again, the goal is essentially to be the voice for Milford, to communicate with the MSBA professionals in terms of, I would imagine, taking the short list of vendors who are capable in terms of having the cycles in their, in their work routine to be able to take on another project, and then narrowing down one that, I guess, best fits the need and scope of what we're looking for. So I will say, before I open it up, that Brendan and Chris both raised their hand for this, so I appreciate you guys volunteering so we didn't have to try to force anybody into it here tonight. So with that said, I guess I'll open up, I'll open up the floor. Any thoughts or comments on this? John?
Yes, I have a lot of thoughts, or a few thoughts, but maybe strong thoughts. So I've sat on a number of design selection committees for the town, various projects, the youth, the youth center, police department, fire department, a few others. But I, I think in this role here, I think it's imperative that we have somebody that's, and this clearly comes out either Chris or Mike, that's on the school building committee. There's so much engagement there that, and with all due respect, Brendan, I didn't know you had interest until, until 30 seconds ago, but I think it needs to be the, it needs to be one of our school building committee representatives. And we have Chris here, who's, who's on the school building committee. He's coming up on a nine-year member here. He's an engineer. He's on the planning board. He's on the school building committee. I'd feel very comfortable having Chris be our representative there. He's, he's got the time and grade, in my opinion.
Mike, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, go ahead.
Who picks the other two members?
The other one is this guy right here, or someone he appoints.
That's a solid member, okay.
And then I believe the third is what's considered the town CEO, so that can either be the select board chair or brick.
Of the town.
I don't know who they appointed.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, John. Thank you both for being willing to serve. I know you both spend a lot of time here and are willing to spend more, so I really appreciate that. I'd make a motion for Chris to be appointed, just, you know, aligning with what John said. I think it'd be really important to have kind of that continuity between the building school.
I'll second that. Okay. A motion by Megan, second by Brendan. Is there a discussion, or more discussion, I should say?
Yes, just quickly, then, well, depending on how things go on the vote, you know, I appreciate the support, you know, said, John had just said, currently, I'm on the, on that board, you know, I kind of ran through this third term, knowing that this project was, was coming along and wanted to be a part of at least the beginning portions of the project as we get into this, at least this designer selection side. And as John had mentioned, you know, certainly my role on planning board and my day job as an engineer, just want to be able to utilize that skill set, you know, and certainly know that we're looking to find a, you know, an architect that is going to look towards that school that we want, whether it's a eight-through-12, nine-through-12, but definitely that comprehensive piece. So with all that in mind, that's why I certainly would want to be a representative for this board in the community.
All right. Thank you. I guess that would wrap this one up. Then so we have a motion by Megan, second by Brendan. All on paper? What's your names? Thank you for that. We'll move on to the Director of Technology Grants and Communication update.
Oops, sorry. Just putting that up on the screen.
Sure.
Okay, we need to refresh that.
John can help you if you need it.
Well, I didn't, I don't know where I am.
There we go.
I didn't pull up the agenda yet. I haven't signed into Milford MA.
All right. Thank you all for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. And just want to give you a brief update on, on the, you know, the three departments that I'm overseeing. The first being our technology department. First thing I want to do is acknowledge the team of professionals that I'm working with, Kevin Cullen, John De Silva, Edgar Hinton, Dave Maloney, Dan Nelson, Sarah Boyle, Ryan Nesta, and Lisa Byer. It's a, it's a lean crew, but it is a extremely competent crew of talented professionals. They are hardworking, and I, I trust them incredibly. I know that they are, they have students and teachers and families in mind with all of their work. So they get right on any assignment that, that's given to them. They tackle any problems right away. You know, one of our goals always is good, strong customer service and being efficient. Those are the two things that we pride ourselves on, and it's a great team. In particular, I want to single out Kevin Cullen, who's our network manager. Kevin is, I, I know Craig knows this, Kerry knows this, Wen knows this. He is one of the unsung heroes of the Milford Public Schools. Kevin knows everything there is to know about our network and how things work. He's also has the most longevity in our department as well, so he's got some of that historical institutional knowledge that makes him invaluable. But Kevin is one of those guys that's a jack-of-all-trades, whether it's cybersecurity or some type of software platform or whatever it is. It doesn't matter. Kevin is, he's the go-to guy. He's really an outstanding employee for the Milford Public Schools. So I want to really commend Kevin. All right. An update of where we're at. So this year, we deployed about 900 or so new Chromebooks for students and inventoried and updated and reissued about 3,000 more. That was all during the summer. We did not purchase about 300 Chromebooks that we normally purchase every year. We normally purchase right around 1,200 Chromebooks, but this year, we have had, we had enough inventory and storage that rather than purchase new ones, we wanted to dip into that. We felt like our supply was strong. So we had a little bit of a savings there. About 225 new desktops and laptops for MHS, Shining Star, Central Office, and the FRC were deployed for our staff. One of the things that I'm sure we talked about earlier just before this meeting is, is improving our wireless security. So we've made a couple of changes to our networks just to make them a little bit more secure, encrypting them so that they're not open. The guest network previously was an open network. We wanted to make sure that all of our guests still had some, some type of security in their online dealings wirelessly. So that's an upgrade that we've made. We're expanding our filtering to our Windows and Mac devices that are just district-issued. Mostly, those are located in our computer labs here at the high school. So we've improved the filtering to those devices so that it's on par with what our students are using on their Chromebooks and what our staff are using on their laptops. One of the things that I'm really proud of in, in terms of that cybersecurity is our basic cybersecurity awareness among our end users, among our teachers, is really starting to take hold. You know, when one of those phishing or spoofing emails get through somehow, my inbox the next, that night or the next day is filled with, "This doesn't look right. Can you let me know if this looks right?" You know, I got, "You gotta look at this," a call from Craig the other day, because he got one. And he was like, he wanted to show me. He was so proud of himself for not falling for the scam. So, but our staff is starting to understand, like, phishing emails and scam emails is the, like, that's the number-one gateway into identity theft or something that's a lot more damaging. We know that we, we can expose our network to something that's, that's pretty awful and shut down operations, and it could be really paralyzing. So I think people are starting to appreciate that. They don't always love the fact that their laptops reboot every Monday morning right in the middle of something or right in the middle of a meeting, but it's part of the deal. You know, the, the two minutes or three minutes of inconvenience of your laptop rebooting is, is, at the end of the day, it's worth it to keep our, our machines, our network up to date and safe. Part of that also was rolling out last spring. We rolled out multi-factor authentication to, to our staff in terms of email, in terms of their Google accounts. So that way, you know, it's, most of us are used to that in our, in our personal lives. It was something new for our work world, where if you're logging in off-site, that, you know, you've got to provide a code or have some type of app that you can verify you are who you are. Our staff, there was a little worried that this would be like a big change. Our staff really understood that this was a necessary step that we needed to take, and were really, they worked with us on this. There's a few, a few hiccups about, you know, passwords and things like that, but we got it all figured out, and they understand that there's a, there's a reason for this. So they're on board. That was really appreciated. Last spring, we expanded our wiring, our network wiring at the high school and in Shining Star in preparation for one of the asks that we talked about, the capital plan, where we asked for new wireless access points. We extended the wiring to some of the dead spots at the high school and in Shining Star. We were able to do that last year with the remaining E-rate funds that we had on, on hand, so that it didn't come out of our budget, really. And that was in preparation for the work that we're going to be doing this summer. So that way, our Wi-Fi coverage at the high school and at Shining Star is, is going to be improved. Another task that we've taken on this year is reviewing and inventorying all of our subscriptions. We kind of lost track of that a little bit over the years. New subscriptions are constantly being added, whether it's at, at a teacher level or a department level or, or a school level. We wanted to just have a, a solid list of what are we using, who's using it, who's paying for it, how much does it cost. And that way, and the next step being, we're going to be evaluating these. Are these still effective tools for instruction? Are these still things that align with what, what our outcomes are for, for students and teachers? So we want to get a better handle on the subscriptions, because there was a little bit of everyone kind of doing their own thing, and we wanted to bring it more in-house so that we had a better accounting of that. Our student use agreement was updated over the summer and rolled out to families. One of the, the bigger changes is, is we're a lot more clear with our charge and our fee procedures. One of the things that we had, had been doing was providing optional coverage for, for families to buy for the Chromebooks, but we weren't ever really tapping into that because we understand that kids are kids, and sometimes accidents happen. They drop their device. Sometimes there's a little bit of wear and tear. And we're able to fix those devices, make those repairs, do what we need to do all in-house and not coming out of our budget. We use our tech team here with Dan Nelson and his student tech team to accomplish a lot of those repairs. They do those as part of their, as part of their learning in class. They drag to the schools, they pick up the Chromebooks, they bring them back here, they fix them, and they get, they get them right back. So we weren't really charging families for anything. The only time we, we were really charging families is if the damage to the Chromebook was intentional or severe or significant. We, we used all the adjectives we could think of to make it very clear, like, this had to be purposeful, or this had to be significant. Or if the, if the Chromebook was just lost, we were, we were charging families. So we updated our language in our student use, our student use agreement to reflect that practice. We're continuing to fine-tune and improve our inventory accountability. We know that when we're talking about somewhere close to 6,000 devices across the district, including, you know, things like projectors and iPads and Apple pens and all that stuff, that we're never going to be 100%, but we want to be as close to that every day. So we're, we're getting closer all the time. We're going through our records, making sure that when devices are retired, that they're retired not only in physically, but they're retired in our inventory system. We're making sure that when students or staff leave the district, that their accounts in terms of what devices are assigned to them, that's all cleaned up and everything is aligned. So we're continuing to improve that. We updated the AV system in the Brookside cafeteria that was constantly kind of in and out. There were some issues there, so we said, you know, "Come out here, fix this once and for all," rather than having you come back every three months to tweak this or tweak that. So the Brookside cafeteria should be good to go. The same thing with the, the Milford High auditorium. We had that rewired just to provide a little bit more consistency and reliability, as well as to make sure that it was up to code in terms of the electrical work there. So the, the high school auditorium should be good to go as well. And just a, a kind of a quick update on, on some of those, of those tickets that we use in terms of technology issues. Between the first day of school for staff this year and Monday this week, we had 1,823 tickets that were, that were submitted. And of those, I'm sorry, 1,823 tickets were completed, and we had 20 still outstanding on Monday. So 1,843 had been submitted. An average response time of about three and a half hours and one day of resolution time. So someone submits a ticket within one day, their problem should be fixed, and if they have a device, back in their hands. Now, obviously, some of those are, they take multiple days, and some of those we're able to respond to within minutes. So I'm really proud. Like I said, one of the things I led off with is, is being efficient and good customer service. Our team takes a lot of pride in that. We don't like seeing unassigned tickets. We don't like seeing things that are on hold for a while. We try and tackle these things as quickly as, as possible, because we know that's good for teachers and good, good for kids. Also, as part of that technology work that we're doing, a work in progress, is we're trying to make our HR systems align with the ticketing system that we use for technology, the ticketing system that we use for maintenance, also making sure some of our HR processes are, are, are digitized, so that we're not passing the papers and things like that and sending things through inter-office mail. We know we can do that with a little bit more efficiency using technology. To be quite honest, that's a work in progress. Wen and I have been collaborating on that over the past year. It's a much bigger project than I anticipated. There's a lot more forms and a lot more nuances to, you know, the different positions and the different tasks that need to happen. So that's taken us a little bit, I shouldn't say a little bit, a lot longer than I anticipated. I really thought that was going to be a quick turnaround, and it hasn't been. So I'm continuing to work on that. And then one of the things I wanted to mention is the, our collaboration with Milford Police Department and our SRO, Anthony Bavozzi, especially at the high school here, making sure that our network, our cameras, our Rave security app, all of those are done in partnership with, with, with Tony and with the police department. One of the things that we did last fall, I think post my meeting with you guys last fall, was we made sure our cameras were available to the Milford Police Department in their, at the police department, in their, I'm blanking on the, the word, where they receive the calls.
Dispatch.
Dispatch, thank you. In their dispatch room. So they've got a wall of cameras so that they can see into our school when needed. So making that access available to them is, was something that we were really happy to do, because it's just going to make our schools safer. Want to update you on those town meeting articles that, thank you, you supported moving forward that were recently passed. The VMware, which helps with our, our licensing for our phones, the software that's been purchased and that's been updated already, that's already been rolled out. The next two years of that purchase, our $20,000 a year, those are going to be built into our operating budget. Okay? So those won't be capital ask going forward. Cisco is, the Cisco phone servers, the physical servers themselves, they're being built out right now by our engine, the vendors that we use. Those engineers are building those out, so those servers will be upgraded soon. And then we'll be buying the access points and switches, the wireless access points. We'll be replacing all the, all of the old ones, installing a few new ones in some of those dead spots I mentioned here at the high school and at Shining Star. That's going to be ordered probably winter-spring. It's going to be staged by our vendor partner, and then we'll get that work done over the summer. So that's going to be a, a pretty huge project for us to, to do over the summer. The town supported $120,000. Another $680,000 is going to be reimbursed by E-rate. So, you know, all told, that was, you know, about an $800,000 project, which we're on the hook for for only about 120. So, you know, that's a good, that's a pretty good deal. Upcoming, some things that we'll be working on that are no money. Updating our data privacy policies and procedures, making sure that our subscription and software vendor agreements are in place to, to protect student and staff data. Continuing to, to work on, as I mentioned, our subscriptions, looking at the effectiveness, how these are being used. Are they still needed? Are there redundancies? Do we have two different programs that are doing the same thing? Do we have, you know, two schools that are buying the same thing? Is it better to, to buy in bulk? That, that type of thing. And then, you know, I think I've mentioned this to you guys before, probably the, the issue of our, of our educator lifetimes is, is on the table now, and it's very prevalent, is what does AI look like in education? So looking at policy and procedure, looking at professional development and professional learning for our staff, so that our staff know what it is and how to use it. And then where does, where does student use fit into all of this? This is, this is a major, major deal for us as educators. It will, it's going to be the talking point in, in education for, for the next 20 years, without a doubt. Some upcoming things that do have money. So the monitors, flat panel monitors like this one, and new Chromebook carts to replace the aging Chromebook carts at Woodland, those are going to be built into our operating budget for this year. So those will be part of our ask. I am going to be looking to add more cameras at Milford High, Memorial, and Brookside. That's going to be in, in our budget. I don't have a final number for you, obviously, because this is still a, a work in progress, and we're just at the early stages of our budget ask. But the big one, just as a heads-up going forward, this will be for next year, the next capital request coming in October, replacing our whole phone system. One of the things that we're going to be doing for FY '28, so starting this work in the summer of 2027, is moving all of our phone services to the cloud, just to modernize our system, just to make it a little bit more efficient, just to make it a little bit more secure as well, so that our phone system is not susceptible to physical damage, such as power outages here at the building, or water damage, or whatever it is. You know, and the phone, putting it on the cloud will make it a little bit easier to monitor and a little bit easier to update as needed, as software changes. And it also includes replacing most of, if not all of, the phones. All of the phones are somewhere between five and 10 years old. Some of them may be available to use on the cloud. Most of them will not. One of the added features that we're also looking to do as part of these phones, and it doesn't really come as an expense, knock on wood, that might change, but our vendor has, has shared with us, you know, potentially having emergency kind of panic buttons on all of the phones, which will be an added layer of security and safety for our, for our staff, so that they'll have kind of emergency buttons in the classroom that they can press. They don't have to worry about Wi-Fi or cellphone reception or anything like that. We also feel like, based on some of the, the laws that have been moving through various state houses in different states, but we're also seeing here in Massachusetts, that having some type of panic button emergency system in schools, it doesn't necessarily say in classrooms just yet, but in schools available to teachers, is going to be the law. So getting ahead of that, it might be, this, this is an opportunity to do that. But even if it's not a law, if we can make our classrooms a safer place for, for teachers and kids, we want to do that. So this year's ask, you might be wondering, is about some of the phone stuff, you know, the VMware and the Cisco. Why are we buying that now if we're replacing the phone system in two years? We need a bridge. Getting everything engineered and ready to go, and obviously, you can see it comes with a fairly large expense. We need to plan for that. We want to make sure we do it the right way. It's not something that you can just do overnight. It's not something you just say, "We're going to get new phones," and we just go with it. It takes a lot of planning and, and organization to do that. And we've got this gap between where we're at now and when that cloud switch is going to happen. So the Cisco servers and the VMware allows us to get to that point where we're ready to go and make that switch. So that's all I got on the technology side. So before I move to the other two areas, I want to stop there and give you guys a chance to digest all that.
I just have two quick questions, Tim.
Sure.
First off, as an end user, the customer service level is amazing, so it is much appreciated. There's nothing more frustrating than, like, you get locked out of Aspen, and then like two hours later, you're back in.
We try.
So kudos to the team. Really appreciate that. I was curious, do you do cyber awareness training at all with the team? Because it's gotten so sophisticated, like, they would take the I and, you know, it looks like it's coming from Milford, Mass. So just curious.
That's what, one of the things that we do try and do is when we get, when, when we get large-scale phishing scams that we know lots of people get, I'll send out an email and, and share with them.
The example.
This is what, like, here's how you could detect this as a scam.
Yeah.
This is what you might look for. Like, you know, instead of coming from @milfordma.gov it came, or .com.
Sure.
It came from milford-ma.com. Like, little things like that.
Yep.
You know, instead of coming from C. Consigli, it came from Craig Consigli. Like, that's not his email address.
Absolutely.
So little things like that. You know, and also just preying on some basic human behaviors, you know, offers of, of new jobs with, you know, high salaries.
Sure.
You know, just provide, just provide your email address. Just provide, you know, we'll send you a, a signing bonus. Just send, send us your bank account information. Like, little things like that, like, if we can educate people just to look for these things.
Yep.
It cuts down on a lot of.
Absolutely.
The issues.
No, that's great.
So we try.
Okay. And then the HR processes that you were talking about leveraging the Helpdesk for, are there any data privacy concerns there, or that's all encrypted, or?
Yeah.
Think of even access to that? Like, you wouldn't want a form to go in with someone's personal information that everyone who sees the Helpdesk has access to.
Yeah, no, and that's part of, that's part of the.
Challenge.
The challenge, the, the, the security and everything being encrypted, that's not.
Okay.
But making sure things are routed the right way.
Got it.
So that, like, if it, you know, when I submit it, it goes to the right person and not to someone else by accident.
Okay.
We don't want that to happen.
Got it.
So making sure everything, the workflow.
Yep.
Happens the right way.
And even visibility to the tickets, is that managed?
Same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to make sure that the right people can see what they need to see.
Okay. Great.
So.
Just that that's part of it. Thanks.
Yeah, just the, the, I, I characterize it as the workflow.
Yeah.
Making sure the right people can see the right things when they need to is proved to be a little trickier than I expected.
Yep. No doubt. Thank you for the updates.
Thanks so far for the presentation, Tim. A question about the, the phone system. I, I think we're being forced to the cloud. Is that like a pretty accurate?
Um, yeah. Well, you know, one of the reasons that we had to sw. Yeah, well, you know, one of the reasons that we had to sw- you know, update, um, our Cisco systems is because we had reached the end of life and they don't support these things anymore.
Right.
So a lot of the hardware, um, and, and some of the software is not gonna be supported anymore because the world is moving to a cloud-based system.
Yes. So with, with that said, I mean, was it two weeks ago, AWS cloud crash?
Correct.
I mean, like, I don't see that as being a more secure method.
Yeah.
Than like a more traditional system. So I guess, what is being addressed in that realm on, on the provider's end that we feel confident going forward and spending all this money, even, I mean, I know we're being forced into it, but I mean, if the AWS server, the, assuming that's the one we're using, goes down again and we have an emergency, will our phones work?
Yes. So that's, you know, that's what we're doing for this coming year. Um, Kevin, Colin and I have already started to meet with, um, some of our engineers and some of our, um, our consultants that, that, you know, that we're paying good, good money for. Is to kind of guide us in this process because it's not my world. I'll be the first to admit it. Kevin is a lot more skilled in this and a, and a lot more knowledgeable a- a- about this, but it's not his niche either. So we're using some people who, um, we trust to guide us in this process of building this the right way. Uh, we've also got a consultant, um, kinda on staff over there, who this is his world.
That was a painful day.
So when, yeah, so there are ti- you know, we've already, we've already consulted, consulted with Matt a couple of times, like, hey, Matt, does this sound right to you? Or are we, are we in the right ballpark with this? Because he knows it as well as anyone. Um, so we feel like we've got, between the three of us, we've got a good solid brain between us, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And I guess the other question, just because this will come up with town meeting, is this phone system, are we able to then transfer over to the rest of the town as well? And say, can you, you know, would the rest of town government be able to tap into this as well, save, thinking about saving the taxpayers some money potentially?
You know, Brendan, that's an excellent point. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think we have any collaboration with the town IT.
I, yeah, um, you know, we, we tend to collaborate with, with the town IT on things like payroll and HR processes.
Sure.
Certainly with some of the security, um, as it pertains to like the police department.
Yep.
So we, that, those are kind of, that's a limit of our kind of collaboration, is those two worlds.
Sure.
But that's a great question. I- i- if that's something that we can do on a larger scale to save the taxpayers money, that's a great question. I, I don't know the answer to that.
No problem.
But I can find out.
Awesome, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Well, I, I just add, there was definitely a disconnect between school IT and, and town IT over the last ten years. Different outside vendors, different inside personnel. Um, I'm, I'm sure that a lot more can be done to, to get on the same page. Whatever page that needs to be, but, um, there was, I can, I can say firsthand, I witnessed an absolute lack of, um, collaboration. It, it's not a knock on any person or any entity or any company, but there's definitely more, more bridges we can build.
Yeah, a- and I, I do think we do, um, we do have a pretty good relationship with, with, I, I shouldn't say pretty good. A very good relationship with Chris George and, and his team, um, where it comes to the, the things that we do collaborate on.
And the town still has an outside vendor that, that does, that fills in a lot of the gaps there, so.
Yeah.
They used to be involved here, they're not anymore. I don't know why they're not, but whatever, it's, more collab, more, 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 there can be more collaboration, for sure.
Understood.
Just my opinion, I'm not the expert, but.
And to be clear, this is gonna seamlessly go into the high school, uh, the, the new high school?
Yes.
Right?
Hundred percent.
So I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Yep.
Okay.
It's definitely important to note that the timing of that.
Mm-hmm.
Takes an incredibly critical piece of technology away from this building, so no matter what happens to this building, other spots, as long as the wifi is up or the network is up, will not lose this goal.
Right.
Which is a big deal, because if they're doing sections of this building at a time, as long as something's connected to the internet, the phone is connected. That's all.
What are typical t- tickets that you get? You got eighteen hundred. What do you usually, what do you come across?
On the, on the Chromebook, on the Chromebook side, it tends to be things like, uh, cracked screen.
Yeah.
Missing keys, um, that, you know, the hinge cut, came loose. You know, on the teacher's side, it might be, um, unblocking websites, or, um, you know, they, you know, they got locked out of their Aspen account or something like that, might be something in, in that realm, or, you know, their device, you know, I'm plugging it in, but the charge isn't taking. Things like that.
Right.
It could be a little bit of everything. Projector, projector's not working, sound's not coming out of my laptop. So it, it's a little bit of everything. But yeah, there's a, there's a lot, you know, on, on any given day, um, you know, we're getting quite a few tickets and, and the guys are jumping around it all right away.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in to present.
Of course.
Always appreciate it. Um, you talked about some savings, um, for not having to, or being a, not having to buy the Chromebooks. Where do you see those savings being put within your department, or do you, or do you think that it'll, it'll go elsewhere?
Well, that was last year.
Oh, it was last year?
This year, yeah, that was last year, yeah.
Yeah.
Last year, we just, we didn't, we didn't buy as many as we needed to.
Okay.
But going forward, um, you know, we do, we always buy a few more than we need. We don't go by the exact student number, just to be safe.
Exactly, yeah.
So we'll start to build up that stock again a little bit.
Okay.
And at some point, we'll be like, alright, you know, we don't need to, we, like, for ex- last year, we didn't buy all of third grade, basically.
Okay.
Cause every year, we usually buy three, six, nine.
Okay.
Last year, we didn't buy third grade, so we just bought six and nine.
So, yeah, those savings were, I guess, were you able to utilize those within your department, or did they come back and?
Yeah.
Transportation's always the one that's, needs more money, so.
Well, we were, yeah, we were able to, um, accelerate our replacement cycles for the laptops for staff.
Okay.
Yeah. So. We were able to move things along in that way.
Yeah, I figured this, I figured that was the case, but I just wanted to hear that. And then your tech team, I think it was great that you acknowledged your tech team, obviously, you know, the almost two thousand tickets. You feel like you're still adequately, adequately staffed?
Yeah, I do. Yep, I do. Um, you know, there are certainly, there are, there are some really busy times of the year. Summer is a really busy time for us, uh, for, for my staff. Uh, the month of September and October are really busy times. Things will slow down a little bit, um, and that's where we can, um, use our staff to do some of the preventative maintenance and be a little bit more proactive, um, whether it's, uh, cleaning up devices, updating them, uh, cleaning projectors, replacing bulbs. So they can do some of those other things that maybe aren't ticket, you know, responding to tickets. And just be a little bit more proactive in, in maintaining things. Inventory, things like that. Yeah, there's always something.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I feel like we've got a good number, um, so personnel is not, is not a concern right now.
Sounds good. Um, then going back to like kind of the, the clouds, so the phone base will go, eventually go into the cloud. Do you foresee that with our data service? I think our, we still have data service here on site.
Yeah.
Do you foresee that being a cloud-based system also?
We haven't got that far yet.
Okay.
Uh, one of the things that we have talked about is moving some of our servers out of this building.
Right.
Sooner rather than later, um, just because it's not, it's not always an easy process. But if we can get some, um, safety in spreading things out. Would be a good idea, um, because right now, we have a, a he- pretty heavy concentration of our, uh, our data servers here at the high school. We have, I believe it's one or two over at Woodland. We would like to spread them out a little bit more, so that way, if something happens, you know, God forbid to a building, we, we've got some backups and, and safety.
Reven, yeah, cloud.
Yeah, safety and spreading things out.
Okay, yeah, no, that sounds good.
So, so who, who, who's, who's actually making that decision and timeline and, and consulting in that, that whole process? Because on the town side, we've gone to pretty much almost all cloud-based services. We had an incident six, eight, nine months ago on the town side that probably could have been avoided, um, if things were, certain things were done sooner. I'm not an expert to, to comment any further, but who, so how are you, who and how are you deciding, uh, w- w- let's go cloud-based on everything tomorrow? Or it's gonna take a year or two years, or these ones go today and these ones go in six months? Who, who's, who's in that, who's involved in that process? I mean, obviously you are, but.
Yep.
Um, are you consulting with a, a vendor, or?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got a couple.
I mean, the, the cloud base is just, it's, it's where everything should be at, allegedly.
Yes.
But I know it's a process to get there.
It is. It is a process to get there, um, and, and prioritizing a couple of other things first, but it's definitely something that we've started to have conversations with some of our vendors on. You know, we've got a couple of, like I said, consultants that, that we utilize for our phones, for, um, you know, for our, our Google services. Tho- those people are involved in, in some of those, those, uh, discussions, um, but we've got a couple of good partnerships that we've had, whether it's providing, um, you know, network troubleshooting or engineering of, of our network.
So is this gonna be a capital item as, as it progresses, or are you gonna do it in budget?
I don't know. I don't know yet.
I think we need to address that. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I know I just did.
Yeah.
But something we need to address sooner than later, I, I think anyways.
I, I, the only thing I would add to that is I think it's probably gonna be a mix of both, and the reason for that is when you get to cloud, a lot of the stuff, just like the VMware licensing is a s- a subscription-based thing where you're paying yearly. So you'll end up with your, your budgetary numbers to pay for this stuff, but there also typically is a kind of a one-time heavy lift of how to get all of this from here safely to here, where you tend to pay for mostly services of somebody, like the consultant to come in and spend all this time preparing and moving data in a one-time kind of project, and that's usually the part that actually is costing the most money. So it's probably gonna be.
I just don't want anybody to be afraid to address it because it, it needs to go there, right?
Oh, I, I, there's, there's no.
I'm not saying anybody's done anything wrong, um, but let's just.
There's a case not to, but in smaller businesses or municipality settings, where your team is the size that it is and you don't have fifteen high-qualified engineers, you have seven people doing a bunch of things at the same time, it's, it's the safest, best way to go about things, absolutely.
Safest, best way is cloud-based?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're, that's, we've had some preliminary talks about going in that direction. Right now, I think our focus is, you know, the, the on-premises servers that we have and, and moving those and spreading those out throughout our buildings.
And I think to John's point, you know, if we truly go that way, is to try to get some budgetary numbers sooner rather than later. So we can get it on the capital plan, cause certainly we don't wanna surprise FinCon with that. So whether that, whatever the, the scope of that number is, we should at least try to get an idea and a plan together to, to at least, again, get it on that capital budget.
Good.
Maybe just as follow-up to that, Tim, I feel like when we used to get updates from Mrs. Angellini, there were, there's like an overall IT plan and strategy as well. Is that a document that, we don't need to necessarily see it, but is that something that's still in play in terms of like the facilities plan, planning out the next three to five years in terms of major projects?
Yep.
Awesome.
Yeah, we, we developed one, um, last year.
Great, okay, thanks.
Obviously.
Our budget is helping to support the needs on there.
It's something that, you know, our, our, our department, we developed.
Okay.
And obviously, in the world of technology.
It's out of date by the time the.
And, you know, also dealing with some, some equipment and devices that maybe, uh, you know, reach the end of life sooner than expected. It's always under revision and refinement, so.
Excellent, okay.
Things do come up, so it's, it's something, it's a living document for us.
Yeah, thank you.
One more shift from, uh, I guess from the hardware side of it, uh, in cloud, the AI side of it. Do you foresee coming back in with a more comprehensive kind of detailed presentation on AI?
I can, yeah. Um, we've, um, one of the things that we're looking at doing this year is, is forming like an AI task force. Kind of a working study group. You know, uh, the state this, this summer came out with kind of like a, a very, very broad guidance document with, with the, the caveat that more guidance and direction is, is soon to follow. Not that we're waiting on the state at all. Um, we've had, like I said, um, some preliminary conversations ourselves about doing something like, what is Milford's approach to, to AI? Where is that gonna start? You know, we've done some early work with our high school staff around AI and the tools that are available for them to use. And we've had, you know, Josh and I have had some, uh, conversations about where the next steps will be for that. But, you know, it's such a, it's an ever-changing world, um, whereas, you know, you, you know, the, the tool that you show someone today is going to be completely obsolete tomorrow, um, uh, so we're working on that.
Yeah, good, yeah. Certainly, there's the, the pros and cons of AI, right? I think a lot of people have a lot of negative connotation to the fact of, it, it, it's a cheating tool, but when we think about, AI has actually been around for a long time because of spell check, right?
Correct.
In its simplest form. You know, I use AI from an engineering standpoint to, to help facilitate better design. So there are some good, useful parts of it, and it's just to understand, you know, and, and have the, you know, students and staff understand that. So that's why when I say getting more, a more detailed, uh, kind of presentation. So everybody is under, understanding, and we as school committee members understand what the technology department is putting forth for, from the side of, this is, these are the bad spots for it, these are the good spots, we're helping student learning.
Yeah, um, it's not gonna go away. So sticking our head in the sand and saying, this is, this is just a fast, isn't gonna happen.
Any, right?
Yeah, isn't gonna happen.
Yeah.
And saying, we're just gonna block it forever for kids.
Right.
Isn't gonna happen, and it's not good for them, because they're gonna enter a world and a workforce where AI is prevalent everywhere they go.
Correct.
So we've gotta do something to prepare our kids for, whether it's college or the workforce, where they have an AI literacy. And they know not only the, the how to use it and how, but the, the, the ethical usage.
Right.
Of AI and how to use it correctly. Um, so there's a lot of work to be done there.
Yeah, definitely. And I know, that's why it, it's very generic right now, but yeah, I'd like to definitely see us go down a path of, uh, some detail.
Sounds good. Yep. Good, okay. Next department. Grant update. Um, just wanna acknowledge, we've got a lot of people, you know, while, you know, grants might be under my purview, there's a lot of administrators and teachers that are involved in grant writing, grant submission, and I wanna acknowledge all of their hard work and, and what they do there. They've secured, um, as of right now, jumping to the bottom of that slide, um, about three point eight million, uh, for the district in grants, um, which is pretty impressive. Um, it'll be, you know, we've got a couple of grants that are, we're still waiting on Desi's final approval. It'll be about, you know, three point nine million, um, soon enough. And the grants are both competitive and entitlement grants. Um, you know, the competitive grants are, obviously, they are what they are, they're competitive. The entitlement grants, just because that you're entitled to them, doesn't mean they're any less work, um, and aren't any less involved. In many cases, they're more involved. Um, so they run the gamut from, you know, some of our early childhood work, Shining Star and Family Community Network, uh, to our work with our homeless families and homeless population. Genocide education at the high school, uh, career and technical education, uh, workforce planning, um, at the high school, and things like special education, um, IDEA, and our Title One, Two, Three and Four, um, which supports a, a lot of what we do. You know, it, it's a big chunk of money, um, and obviously, um, my observations and thoughts, I've been asked this a couple of times. There's a lot of uncertainty, especially around the federal grant funding and what that's gonna look like. You know, I shared with Craig earlier today, on the plus side, there's been a reduction in some of the reporting and data requirements that, that are coming from the federal side, um, especially as, as the Department of Education has been, uh, greatly reduced. On the negative side, um, you know, our special education, um, our English learners are economically disadvantaged. Those, uh, students and families benefit the most from some of these grant programs, um, and they are, you know, at risk if these grants go away. Just to give you a sense, you know, about two point seven million of that three point eight is, is, is geared towards our Title One through four and IDEA funding. So, um, you know, professional development, staffing, you know, if those things go away, that's, uh, that's a, a big problem. Big problem. Um, so there's a lot of uncertainty. We'll have to see how things kind of develop and shake out. There's no clear direction, um, or timeline as to when we'll know more. We know that things look good for this year. What next year looks like, uh, we can't say. State grant funding appears to be holding steady, um, but I do get the sense from some of the emails and, um, communications that are coming out from Desi, they're prepared for the Florida fallout. Um, there, there, there's some worry and some trepidation there, that if some of the federal grant funding goes away, what is the state gonna do to fill in those gaps? It's just unknown. So, questions on grants?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. So, obviously, this is not a Milford problem, Tim, right?
No, it's not.
This is just the current state, so I completely understand that. Could you just speak a little bit more mechanically? So if we have a grant for this year, it's already been funded, so like that is not, like, how does the timing work in terms of when you actually receive the funds?
I'm gonna defer a little bit.
Generally, and maybe they're all different.
To when on the, on the, the mechanics of the, of the funding of when it comes.
Yep.
Typically, um, at the state, it's, or state-funded grants, it's, you know, we expend them, or they award the money. We expend it, and then we ask for. or they award the money, we expend it, and then we ask for reimbursement for that. The federal funds, I'm gonna defer to you when a little bit on that.
Yeah, yeah, um, so the entitlement grants, IDEA, Title One, Two, Three, Four, um, they're, uh, they are twenty-seven months, um, grants, which means we have this year, next year, and three months in the third year to spend.
Okay.
And so we receive this, that guaranteed us throughout the, the twenty-seven months. Um, the state grants, uh, the competitive grants usually, um, is one-year grant. Usually they close at, um, the end of the school year or September thirtieth after the summer.
So we're pretty comfortable? We don't have a position one where we've been awarded it, but we wouldn't receive it? Does that make sense? That's, okay.
Yes, for the, for the budget year.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Just more of a comment. Um, like you said, I mean, everyone who's involved in the grant process, amazing job that you're doing, really appreciate it. Anything that we can do to help supplement that and support that going forward that you can think of? I don't know if there's a specific ask there from a budgetary perspective, but obviously let us know about it and be free to help support that as well.
Thank you.
Quickly, yeah, thanks again for, for this part of the presentation, you know, three-point-six million dollars is, is, is a great number to see. So we really appreciate all the hard work that your team's doing.
Okay, last piece, communication update. Communication survey, uh, from the summer, um, we had about six hundred respondents, who ninety-three percent of which felt like communication from Milford Public Schools was satisfactory. We've made a concerted effort to, um, make sure our online school calendars, uh, is up to date. People are putting events in there, um, of note for families so that they can quickly and easily find, you know, what time something starts or where something might be. Instagram and Facebook have continued to grow. We have a really strong following there. It's a good following. You know, it's, it's really been used as a PR tool, not so much for in, uh, information distribution. Our families told us that, you know, social media is, you know, some people are heavily into it, others are not. They do not wanna receive information about things necessarily coming from social media because they're not all on social media. But using it as a PR tool to highlight some of the really great things that are happening in our district has been a strong, uh, has received some strong feedback. Our digital backpack, you know, it's been a year in the making and people are starting to, or I shouldn't say starting, people are relying on it. They know that this is a place to look for resources about, um, information about, uh, events, special happenings, or, you know, registration, Cub Scouts, baseball, whatever it is. It's, it's kind of a go-to, so, you know, when you, in the past, recycle things out of the kid's backpack, it stays in perpetuity on, in the digital backpack. The weekly bulletin that goes out every Friday, um, one of the things that we've tried this year is, is mixing in some different voices so that it's not just me communicating every week. So Craig has weighed in a couple of times, uh, Stacia has weighed in. So adding some, uh, different voices to the, the weekly bulletin, I, I hope gives some different perspective to, to what's happening in the district. Continuing to, to emphasize, uh, talking points as the one tool that we want people to use for, uh, texting with families and communicating so that it's not, this teacher uses Talking Points, this teacher uses Class Dojo, this teacher uses Remind. It's too much for families to manage. So trying to get everything into one tool, um, has been well-received. We're getting closer to that. Talking points and text was by far the preferred tool for communication for families. Email was a second. But families had indicated in their survey, both last year and this year, that they prefer to communicate with their kids' teachers and, and school via Talking Points, um, which is great. Uh, we added a central office Talking Points account, so that way we can send out district-wide messages and announcements and reminders. Things like no school days, uh, we'll use it for snow days, things like that. And again, and one of our emphasis is to continue to push for a systemic, um, expectation around communications between home and school. We have too much variation between different schools, different staff members, different teachers, um, around communication. We want our teachers and families to have that open line of communication where families are feeling informed, where teachers are feeling like their, their messages are reaching families. We want that consistent back and forth. So pushing, uh, communication as, um, an engagement tool to improve student outcomes, not only academically but socially, emotionally, um, is, is, is key. So we're continuing to stress that. I think that's it. Oh, no, one more slide, okay. Um, upcoming additional development of our website and content. We're continuing to explore different translation interpretation tools and supports. Uh, one of the things that we're looking at as we're re-engineering our phone system is looking at our phone trees, um, because our phone trees are primarily in English. So making sure, maybe offering some, uh, translated services for our phone trees. We're trying to, we're continuing to work on reducing our paper and U, uh, US Post Office mailings and continuing to develop our, our, our partnership with MHS and their, um, digital media team. You know, Jeremy Folster and Damian Godet, they're doing some great things and, um, with their, with their classes, seeing how that can incorporate into the Milford Public Schools communications. That's it. Sorry, Craig said twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, Tim?
Thanks.
Sorry, we're pretty close.
Quick question on that one, yeah. So it was all of our questions, that's all. Your presentation was like twelve minutes, you were fine.
Thanks. Thanks.
All good information.
I appreciate the good work.
There you go.
Thank you.
And, yeah, exactly. We, we can't do that. So, yeah, I appreciate those weekly bulletins. Even, even without having kids in the school system, it's nice to be able to get that weekly bulletin, knowing what's going on, yeah, kinda you can, you can go through that digital backpack and as you said, just to see what else is going on throughout the community. So it's nice. Is Talking Points, as you said, you're kinda focusing everybody to Talking Points. Do you foresee that being the best way to communicate? Or do you see us still going the path of, of having like an, an app on a phone where it would be the, the, uh, Milford School, Public Schools app?
You know, right now, I really like Talking Points. Um, you know, we've made such a good, strong effort. I don't necessarily wanna switch everyone over, everyone else to, to something new.
Sure.
I don't wanna keep jumping around. I, I wanna stick with Talking Points.
Yeah.
One of the things that I'm seeing from Talking Points is every year that we've used it, they come out with, um, you know, new features and new developments that are really helpful for our community.
Its own app?
Yeah, it really is.
I haven't used it, so.
Yeah, I, for example, one of the things that they've added recently is, you know, we can send PDFs in English, and they translate the PDF. I mean, that's a really strong option for us, you know, when, you know, for teachers to be able to send out newsletters or curriculum updates and have that translated to families as well, rather than having to send it to FRC. FRC takes, you know, a day or two to translate it and then we gotta print it out and it's, there's a, there's a time lag and a, and a, and a manpower cost to that. The Talking Points is able to cut down for us. So every year they add something new, um, which I really like, so.
No, it's good, 'cause I know when we redid the webpage, that was kind of the next phase that we talked about, but it sounds like, again, that Talking Points kind of filled that, that gap.
Talking Points is working for us right now. Yeah.
That silence is good. I think we're good.
Yeah.
We feel well communicated with, Tim, so thank you.
Alright, thanks. Alright, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
The over-under was eight, and that question pushed you over.
Well done.
I had the over.
I didn't ask the question, you did.
I said, what is this, the NDA?
We will move on to the report of the Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
You got it.
Due, due to the last, um, presentation, the MTA is no longer available. No, just kidding. They are no longer available. Something came up and they, they, they asked, they just. They asked to push their part of the presentation to the next, um, meeting, which is behind.
We can do that.
It's fine. Um, alright, but, uh, I just wanna go over real quick, um, the enrollment information, uh, as it stands currently, uh, and then compare it to where we were at this time last year. So you, I, everyone has in front of them, um, two sheets. One is, says October two thousand twenty-four, one says October two thousand twenty-five. Important to note that the information in October two thousand twenty-five is yet to be certified. So it's, it's our SIMS data, but we have until tomorrow to certify it, so. So, um, our principals are going back, looking at it, make sure it's completely up to date, which it is. So, as you can see, uh, we are, last year at this time, our total enrollment was four thousand five hundred twelve students. This year, we're at four thousand two hundred ninety-one, so we're down, uh, roughly, oh, two hundred and twenty students or so from last year. I think the major hit, if you look at, um, English learner population, last year, we were at one thousand five hundred eighty-eight, and this year, one thousand three hundred forty-eight, so down two hundred and fifty English learners. And then, I mean, you can see in the immigrant population also, last year, eight hundred and two, this year, five hundred fifty-one. So, I think that the current, um, immigration, uh, issues that we're dealing with as a, as a state, community, nation, has affected our, uh, our enrollment. You can also, I also have the, the annual FRC log, which honestly hasn't been horrible. To date, we're right, we're roughly where we, we have been over the past, um, four or five years, actually. In the summer, we had a hundred and ninety-eight, um, students enroll, which was the second highest number in the last six years. So we kept steady, but what the difference is, is we have a number of students that are un-enrolling and we're not filling the seats in behind them. So in the years past, the churn rates, um, we would lose students, but then we also have students coming in behind them. We just don't have those students coming in behind the ones that we're, um, churning out at this point. So it, our overall enrollment is something that we're gonna have to keep an eye on. It's not, and when, correct if I'm wrong, but it's not gonna hit us in terms of Chapter Seventy funding for next year, but the year after is where we can see it actually start affecting, um, our Chapter Seventy funds. Because, uh, we do get more Chapter Seventy funds for, uh, English learners. So it's something we're gonna have to keep an eye on. All of that said, the number of four thousand two hundred ninety-one, um, is still in the ballpark of where we have been for the last twenty-five years. We've, you know, we've never really dipped down below four thousand and never really been above forty-five hundred, forty-six hundred. So we're always somewhere around forty-three hundred, forty-four hundred, give or take, and we're still there. So, um, nothing really to be concerned about at this point. I think that what you'll see when, when the, um, union comes back with the, the class size updates is that, um, we do have some smaller class sizes, which are good. I think our, in particular, our kindergarten class sizes at, um, Brookside are somewhere between either thirteen and fifteen students, um, which is a good number. Obviously, it's, it, it's a good number for our teachers to work with, but then at Memorial, it's a little higher. Our, our dual-language program is, um, fully enrolled, I can't remember the number, it's twenty-two, I think, in each, in both of those classrooms. But then the other, um, kindergarten classrooms over there are right around fifteen students. So that's our kindergarten. The class sizes, as that class grows, um, are going to get larger because we have more kindergarten teachers than first-grade teachers and second-grade teachers and so on and so forth. The other thing you can look at is, uh, on this report, uh, just the class sizes. And you can see that, that we don't have any, let's see, where's the right one? We don't have a, a class size higher than, uh, three thirty-eight, I believe is our highest. In years past, we saw class sizes, a couple of big classes around three seventy, three eighty. So we have generally, um, class sizes that are right around three twenty-five, if you, um, average them out. Which again, is where we've been to the last twenty, twenty-five years. Uh, I don't know if anybody has questions about that?
Looks like none.
You good? Alright, then the last thing I did wanna point out is our attendance numbers. I don't have a handout for you, however, um, we are, I guess if you look at the chart, it looks like we're way above where we normally are at this point in the year. But the chart that we have here really ranges between ninety-four and ninety-six percent. So it's two percentage points, we're up. Overall, um, our class attendance is, is very good right now and trending higher than it has in, in the, since COVID. In our K to, K to ten, I would say, K to ten, we're anywhere between, our lowest is ninety-three-point-nine, and then we range all the way up to ninety-six-point-two for, um, attendance numbers, uh, which is very, very good. Our high school, which in the past was in the eighty percent, like, last year even, in the year before, we're in the eighty percentiles, uh, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven there. Ninety-two, almost ninety-three percent for our juniors and seniors, which is, again, very good. Hopefully we can maintain that. Yeah, that's, so very good on, on attendance. Uh, so that's a bonus.
Excellent. No comments, questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright.
Alright.
All good?
Thank you.
Alright, so we will move on to the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
Great, um, so I have two updates for you tonight. Um, one is around our year two, one and year two mentoring and induction program, and the other is just some examples of teacher leadership that I've seen across the district in the past, um, couple of months. So over the past two weeks, I've met with our year one educators, um, which is all of our new staff that we brought into Milford Public Schools this school year. Um, we meet as a pre-K five group, and then we meet as a six-twelve group. In those meetings, we really discussed, um, gave them time to reflect on different challenges or successes and areas of growth, um, that they've seen in themselves and their students in the past two months of the school year. It also gave them a chance to make connections across buildings. So our, you know, six-twelve group got to meet together and our middle school teachers got to talk to our high school teachers and just build different connections, um, and relationships, which I think is important in their first year so that they don't feel siloed, um, in their classrooms or in their different roles, um, in our, um, in our buildings. It also gave them an opportunity to kinda like voice what they wanted to talk about and what are some of the things that they needed support with. Our mentor coordinators were in attendance there, so it was great for them to kind of hear that, um, because these mentor coordinators work with our, um, mentees and our, um, mentors, to kind of give them the support that they need. So the pre-K five group is asking for some support around evaluation process and submitting, um, evidence moving forward. They're worried about the submitting of evidence to their evaluator for the first time. So our mentor coordinators are gonna have to talk about that with them in November when they meet, um, together there. And then in terms of our district-wide pre-K five group, um, they really just want the space to, to connect, reflect, and grow together. So a little bit less of a formal agenda we'll have when we meet again in February, I believe, because they just wanted the spit time and space to, to process what's happening, um, in their classrooms out loud with each other. Our six-twelve group was a little bit more concrete in what they wanted. They really wanted some support on navigating the Aspen platform and where to find things and just help with some of the technical navigation. They, they knew that Aspen could do things for them, but they weren't exactly sure the fastest and most efficient way to do that. So our two mentor coordinators are actually gonna address that with, um, the team in November when they meet. Um, and then in February, our Director of Multilingual Learners and Dual Language Programming is gonna come in, Jen Norgianian, um, to support them in supporting our secondary multilingual learner students. They felt like a lot of their training was focused on kind of elementary strategies, and they really wanted some secondary support there. So Jen has agreed to come in and kind of run a session with them, um, to give them that support that they want. So, um, it's been a great, you know, two months so far. There wasn't any major challenges that were unexpected. Um, a lot of the feelings were first. Um, a lot of the feelings were first-year teacher type of feelings or new to Milford Public Schools type of feelings. Um, so that was great. For our year two staff members, um, if they don't have professional status, they're required to continue to stay in our mentoring and induction program. Uh, if they do have, I mean, not professional status, professional licensure. If they don't have professional license, if they do have professional licensure, they can opt out, um, but they need to have fifty hours of mentoring to get their professional license. Um, so one of the ways that we support them in doing that is we partner with Mendon Upton Regional School District and Ashland Public Schools. Um, and they were provided with some training, a one-day professional development. We gave them some training around learning walks and what the purpose of doing a learning walk is, which is really um for them to be able to see effective instructional practices, talk about effective instructional practices. Um, with the theory that then they'll be able to reflect on their own instructional practices and make some shifts and improvements in their teaching and learning for their kids. Um, so we engaged them in professional development, they got into at least four different classrooms, they then had a debrief of the day. They went to one district in um the month of November, or really the end of October. They will go to one other district um in the month of March as well, and so we'll do something a little bit different with them. In March, we will bring in our year three educators to engage as well, across the three districts. I believe we have like a hundred and twenty teachers that we will kind of go through this process um with in March, um, which is exciting. And a huge thank you to the staff members of Milford Public Schools, you know, we hosted for our day, um, but I asked teachers across our K twelve classrooms to open up and allow these year two educators to come in. And see what they were doing for fifteen or twenty minutes, and all of our educators and staff members were excited to have visitors in their room, um, which was really exciting, um, that their doors were open. So, a huge thank you to them for, for participating in that and, and opening up their classroom doors and, and being vulnerable um with some of their colleagues. So, it's been a good start to the school year with our mentoring and induction um program. Any questions about what I shared?
Sorry, I just have one. So, I think one of the unique things, very well, Milford is the community, and so I love the investment that we make in this program, 'cause I think it really connects people to the school district, so that's awesome. Just at a high level, how do we train year one teachers on our MTSS? Or how do we introduce them to that?
It's not done right now at the district level.
Okay.
The mentors receive training um at the beginning of the school year before they engage with our mentees.
Yep.
And I am guessing that it is part of that mentor training. The mentor coordinators coordinate that, but let me follow up.
Okay, just curious, yeah. Thanks.
But I would say it's done at a mentor-mentee level.
Okay, thanks.
Um, each building is a little bit different of a system and a process, so it'd be really hard to do.
District-wide.
It'd be really hard to do concretely district-wide, we could talk theory district-wide, but the concrete steps differ a little bit.
Just curious, yeah, great, thanks.
Yeah, I agree. I think it'd be very challenging to do it district-wide. How's that a theory?
Yeah, okay.
And I wish I could say that we have it down to a perfect science at all the different schools.
Yeah.
But we don't, and I think um, I think the, that at the district level, what we have in theory um has needed to adapt at different schools. So, it's important that the, the teachers are at the front line of um showing our first-year teachers.
Just if you're new, I just meant more to that introduction to it.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would add on there too, as I'm thinking about it, is like one of the major pieces of MTSS is our tier one instruction, right, in our tier one programming. You know, illustrative mathematics has been in place now for four years at our K five level. They are invited to an additional day.
Okay.
To kinda get the IM programming.
Yep.
Theory, right, and concretely what the expectations are from the district level.
Yep.
I know Carol Saversky is thinking about like, okay, now that we have exponential learning in place at the K five level, how are we gonna get the train, teachers that come in, the training that they need? Because they'll be year one.
Right.
But our K five teachers will be in year two.
Excellent, okay.
Um, so in terms of tier one, there's definitely conversations around, how do we get them?
Great.
That district-level view of the expectations around curriculum adoption.
Awesome, thank you.
Alright, um, while I've been sitting in this role, I've been really impressed with some of the teacher leadership that's happening in our district, and as a, as the district priority is collective efficacy, right? Which is really around professional trust, building a culture of collaboration, um, and getting some shared leadership. I just wanted to kinda give you some examples of how I've seen that um over the past couple of months here. Um, so one is around the mentor coordinators, which we just kind of named here. Um, but those four um staff members really, first of all, ensure that like every mentee or every new hire has a mentor, right? So, they work directly with our building principals, um, to make sure that that partnership is matched up as soon as the new person walks into their building. Um, which is a huge technical piece, just to make sure that two people are connected. Um, and then they also support the mentors directly, so when there is a conflict between a mentee and a mentor, the first person that kind of deals with that conflict is the mentor coordinator. Um, and so they're navigating some of those personal relationship pieces. Um, and then they also support our mentees and our new hires. They come to the meetings that I have, but they also hold their own building-level specific meetings. Um, so they're really important when we welcome our new staff um into our building, and so a huge, you know, thank you for them, um, and a huge, I think it's important for you to know, like, they're some of the frontline people that are building this professional trust and culture of collaboration as we're talking about welcoming new staff members into our buildings. The second group is our curriculum team leaders, or our CTLs. Um, this afternoon, we actually had our second of five district-wide meetings. Um, pre-COVID, we were really pulling our CTO, CTLs together, and um we just haven't had a chance to do that um since COVID. And so this year, we're really um pulling them together at a district-wide um level, five times throughout the school year. I kicked off the first one, and I'll close out the school year with the last one, but the middle three um are really set for each subject group, um, to identify a member that will plan the meeting, which will include them creating an, an agenda, facilitating the meeting, um, and focus on something in their content area, whether that's horizontal alignment, vertical alignment. But it gives them a chance to talk across school buildings, um, and grade-level spans of, of what's happening and how they're meeting the district priorities and some of the problems that they're working through. I also see it as a chance for them to kind of practice their facilitation skills and their leadership skills in a safe space with colleagues that are also trying to do some of the similar work at their buildings. Um, so they have two more of those meetings throughout the course of the school year. Um, somebody different will facilitate the next one, um, and so forth. At the same time, Carol Saversky has a chance to pull our literacy, elementary, and EL CTLs with a really focus on the district priority of literacy, right? So, it just gives more people the voice on that district priority and to ensure that the curriculum team leaders that are leading some of this literacy work um are also thinking at the pre-K twelve level of what's happening, although the um implementation of exponential learning is also only happening at K five currently. So, they're also a huge piece because they um are subject kind of expertise on the ground while also taking on the role of, of full-time teachers. Um, and so they're doing some great work this year um with that. The next group is, we have had for years ST math leadership teams. When I sat in the role of Curriculum Supervisor of Math, I was really the one that was facilitating those. This year, without the Curriculum Supervisor of Math, just knowing that it was something that we have leaders in the buildings that could take this on, um, we created an ST math leadership team facilitator. And so this person, which happens to be a math specialist at Memorial, Brookside, and Woodlands, um, these people are meeting with the building administrators monthly. They're looking at school-level data together. Um, they're really thinking about how the data informs quarterly meetings that they're having with the leadership team um at their individual buildings, um, which is really driving some of the decisions around, you know, where are we on ST math progress, how is our implementation? Um, and then also some of the challenges and the fun, and when Gigi dresses up and shows up, and all of those types of fun events, they're really coordinating. We know it's working because we are ahead in average goal progress in all three buildings compared to where we were last year. And so it's a great example of teacher leadership um being shown in the data and being shown in the usage. There are two members of Shining Star who have collaborated to coordinate an Escape the School Challenge Family Night. Um, and so they are gonna, they are putting together the whole event. Um, families are spending the evening exploring math topics by solving riddles, and they'll move room to room when they solve the riddle, and then eventually they'll escape the school. Um, so it's a really creative idea, um, it's a really great way to kind of bring families in to kind of play games with their child, um, but also focus on mathematics. So, this was their, their ideas. They proposed it to Corey Vasterson and myself, and so we're supporting them um in developing this event and getting their colleagues on board to, to plan and kind of facilitate it. Um, that's happening on Monday, December first, so it's coming up. Um, and then I would just name, like, there is no way that I can sit here and name every group of teacher leaders. I know of a lot of other examples of teachers running professional development or leading TCT times. Um, I know a lot of our, our teachers are taking some leadership on the MTSS teams. Um, they're supporting implementation of the new program and high-quality instructional materials. Um, there, some of them are having challenging conversations around instructional practices, colleague to colleague. So, those were just a couple of like groups of people that are demonstrating teacher leadership, um, but there's a lot of great examples that are happening in our, in our buildings right now, which is exciting to see, because there's no way, you know, district leadership and um building leadership can kind of run everything um in terms of professional development and creating a culture of collaboration. So, great examples in my mind.
Comments on that?
Nice thinking.
Very much.
Thank you.
We do have the report of the School Business Administrator next, uh, C Personnel Update, do you have anything else?
Uh, actually, I do.
Excellent.
I do have some updates that happened quickly and will have, will continue to happen um quicker. Um, so the transportation bid had, it's uh under the review of the Attorney Murray, and um I saw him today, and he said, um, yes, he's reviewing that, and hopefully, we can post that um in the next week or two. And um, the budget subcommittee already got updated on those, and uh before we posted it, we will send it to uh Matt, and the um, so uh we, we can get the feedbacks, and then we'll advise, advertise it, um, hopefully in two weeks. Yeah, and another um bid is uh the Stacy H. Fat OPM um RFS, um, because it's over one point five million. Um, by law, we're required to hire OPM to manage the whole pro, program. So, um, the RFS has been drafted, and I will send it to, again, to Attorney Murray, um, for his legal advice, and then um, hopefully, we can post it the next, adva, advertise it next Wednesday, and post the bid the following Wednesday. We're doing, we, we hope to, yeah, we plan to do this project in the summer, so we, we, we probably do not have a long time, we, we need to hurry up to find the OPM, and then the designer, and the contractors, and get it going.
Great.
Questions?
Any questions on this, no? Okay, thank you. Alright, so we'll go on to the consent agenda now, I'll ask quickly, does anybody have anything for the minutes that needs to be adjusted, or are we good to go there? Alright, so the consent agenda tonight is going to include the following. The approval of thirteen warrants, the amount of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. The approval of minutes from the October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five meeting, and professional development and the amount of three thousand dollar, uh, three thousand and thirty-nine dollars. A motion to approve. Motion by Brendan, second by Derek, all in favor? Janan Mas, thank you. Alright, that brings us to subcommittee updates. Have any subcommittees met recently?
I'm not sure, was budget before or after the last meeting?
I think it was af, thanks, Melissa.
Was it after, you wanna go, Megan, you wanna give it a shot, 'cause that wasn't.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So, as one just mentioned, we did review the RFPs that are going out, just in terms of um an opportunity to comment and provide feedback on that, 'cause those are really important. One gave a great budget update, so we can talk about that, and then we talked about next steps in terms of heading forward into contract negotiations, and then annual budget planning. I think those were the main items.
Yeah, and especially the annual budget, where we've had so many, um, I guess unforeseen lane changes, where our budget's really.
Yes.
You know, a little worr, worrisome.
We also talked about capital and just ensuring, I think this year, we might be a little bit tighter on time than we hoped in terms of looking at capital items, so just having a better path forward for that, so that prior to next fall, we've fully vetted and everyone feels comfortable, so we have a timeline aligned for that.
Yeah, we talked about, you know, the justification of substantiation, so that when we put this capital plan together, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a blue highlighted thing where all the documentation, we don't have it all yet, but should be easy for anybody to follow. Anybody wa, looking at the document can, can see the justification, the quotes or whatever else might be in there.
Great, anything else? Okay, thank you. Future agenda items. Excellent. Well, that brings us to the end of the meeting, we have nothing else scheduled, so just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Derek.
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor? Janan Mas, thank you, and good night.